Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to this Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting of November seventeenth, twenty twenty. It's approximately six oh one P M. If everyone please stand for our communication and our pledge of Mr. Adam McCool, please just.
Please bow with me. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to come together as a community, leaders of this community, to have a meeting, to do what's best for this county and may it be well pleasing to you. Please be with our first responders and military and protect them through their duties. Please be with these commissioners that they've made the right decisions. That's pleasing to you and best for Swan County. Please be with us as we depart this, that we return home safely with our families. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I would like to take them all to welcome everyone tonight. Also, I'd like to welcome two new commissioners we have, Commissioner Land, here to my right, Commissioner White. General, we look forward to working together and for the better of Swan County, grateful to have you on board and anything we can do to help you as you move along, that's what we're good for. You've got some major decisions to make as you move forward and you'll learn as you go. Every meeting's different, but grateful to have you all and congratulations on representing your different districts. At this time, I'm going to make a little bit of a change in the meeting this evening. We're going to go down to item thirteen, have a couple of minutes here before we have a time specific. We have a proclamation this evening. Have a couple of ladies here, Ms. Rachel and Ms. Amanda are here this evening and it's a great honor for us to present this proclamation. I will read it for you now. National Hospice and Ballistic Care, November twenty twenty, the proclamation reads, whereas forty-one years Haven has helped provide comfort and dignity to thousands of people in North Florida, allowing them to live their last months, weeks, or days comfortably with the people they love. Whereas Haven utilizes interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. Whereas beyond providing physical treatment, Haven extends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas Haven provides community-based palliative care, which delivers expertise to improve quality of life and relief from pain and can be provided at any time during illness. Whereas every year, one point five million Americans living with life limits and illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States, including Haven. Whereas Haven is an advocate and educator about advanced care planning that helps individuals make decisions about the care they want. Whereas the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patient choice and access to individualized services based on the patient's unique care needs and wishes. Now therefore, be it resolved that Lynn K. Stapleton Chairman, I prefer to the authority vested in me by the county of Swan, do hereby proclaim November twenty twenty as National Hospice and Ballistic Care Month and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families, and observe this month appropriate activities and programs. Signed this day, seventeenth, November twenty twenty. Ladies, I'd just like to say, there's a couple of these here that I know for sure that has firsthand knowledge of your care. Mine was most recent. My mother-in-law passed away with a Haven, just awesome care. This was just a few months back. Commissioner Harris, father and mother was there this past year, just a year. And we both have that much respect and gratefulness, thankfulness for taking care of people and keeping them out of pain when there's not a whole lot left that can be done. So we're grateful for that. Gentlemen, if y'all come up, ladies, if you come to the front, we'll take a picture.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Flynn.
I had some, my father, he was in high school, he passed two thousand and eight. He was, made the pain easier to bear, you know, it's still a loss, but it was a whole lot easier than I have a brother, brother who was fifty-one and he slept away in hospice, even in hospice care. But made the pain easier to bear, still hurt, still like yesterday, but it made it so easy to bear, and I appreciate high school.
Is there anybody else with something about that?
I'll just add, the employees that you guys have, the care they give, it takes a special person to do that. I witness that. They're very professional people and I just want to say thank you.
Mr. Ryan, you got anything about that? Do I have a motion? Both root this proclamation. Got a motion by Commissioner Flynn?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now we have a proclamation. At six oh five P M or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance pertaining to L D R twenty dash oh one, an application by Tim Alcorn, authorized agent for N C Y T Holdings LLC to amend the official zoning atlas of Swan County by changing the zoning designation for a partial property from agricultural one to commercial highway interchange. Mr. Ron Meeks. At this time, we'll open the public hearing approximately six oh nine P M. And if we have any persons here this evening that wishes to testify, our county attorney will swear amen this morning.
Anybody, side staff, Ron? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth to help you out?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Ron Meeks, closure, sir.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the application that you have before you tonight is an L D R request number twenty dash zero one. It's an application by N C Y T Holdings. They had authorized Mr. Tim Alcorn as their agent. If anyone knows Mr. Alcorn, and he is a member of the school board, and I believe we have conflict of interest tonight, so he was not present to attend, but nonetheless, we'll move forward. The application for request was to change the zoning on a particular described property from agricultural one to a commercial highway interchange. Subject property is an eight point one zero acre parcel located in section six, township two south, range fourteen east. Property is currently zoned agricultural one and the request is to change the zoning to commercial highway interchange. The current future land use of the property is in an employment center. I know some of you will remember a couple of years ago, we had re-identified the interstate interchanges in the county and expanded those boundaries of those commercial highway interchanges from highway interchange to employment centers on the land use map. Typically, your land use in your zoning maps will mirror each other. The land, underlying land use has to be consistent with the proposed zoning change. So the property that is requested is located within that employment center land use category. In your packet of information, I had attached a map, which is a, one that looks like this, kind of a blow-up of the future land use map and the slatted red lines there that kind of encompass the intersection of Interstate ten and U S one twenty-nine north shows the layout of where the boundary of that employment center is. I took a little flat-out area and just kind of identified the location of that parcel with a site arrow. Also included in your packet was a boundary survey of the property showing the configuration of the, of the eight point one zero acres. It also had taken an excerpt off of our zoning map, which kind of looks like this. The green areas is agricultural and in the black triangular shaped property is the eight point one zero acre parcel, which shows its location and vicinity. Location inside is approximately a quarter mile north of the existing commercial highway interchange zoning that exists along one twenty-nine. And this property actually fronts U S one twenty-nine. The request was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board for an advisory decision at their October meeting. Recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board was for approval. There was a lot of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting about the location of the site. The thoughts from the Planning and Zoning Board, just to summarize a little bit, was that the location of the site was located within the employment center land use. And the second part of that was it seemed to be the zoning trends of development was towards one twenty-nine north. So they felt like they were comfortable with it, recommended to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the zoning request. We've included a ordinance in your packet for approval. If the zoning is, is choose to be approved, if not, then we'll have to modify that, but you have that in your pocket as well as the corresponding completed application, letters of authorization, the locations of the maps, surveys, and future land use maps. You don't have any questions of me at this time, I'll enter the file through the record.
Do I have any questions from Mr. Meeks?
I got, I got a few.
Commissioner Land?
I know it is, so apologize if I ask.
Take your time.
Unintelligent or out of protocol questions. At the current site, does, can you hear me? Are there already any one twenty-nine D O T access points? I mean, we know we have a traffic issue out already, we've had a couple fatalities near that site. So traffic is a concern. As far as their ingress and ingress, do we have a site map for any intended project? We know that, in my real estate experience, D O T is not, not really lenient on giving those. I've been in busy interchanges. The county, if I'm not mistaken, we are an adjoining landowner of this parcel?
That's true.
Okay. And there is an access point there. Is the intended use of the subject property, will that, they intend on sharing our driveway with some type of easement, or have they contacted D O T for, for their own access? Or maybe you have a site map for the intended project? You see where I'm going with that?
I don't have any pending site plans that's been submitted with, with the zone, with the zoning change request. Believe there is an access point there where the county's property is and then the, the closest would be south where the J W Hill Auction Site is located on the same side of one twenty-nine. I'm not aware of an actual driveway on this specific property. Kind of goes uphill there, it's a lot higher than U S one twenty-nine, but we don't have, you know, the zoning request isn't necessarily pertinent to a particular project. You know, that's one of the things that the board has to consider when they look at zoning changes, is that those types of uses that would be permitted within a highway interchange could potentially be on the property. So they don't necessarily have to submit a site development plan at the time of a zoning request. Sometimes we do, but in this, in this fashion, we don't.
I ask those questions due to the traffic concerns that we know exist there. We've talked to D O T. I think D O T is working on some type of plan there, but we haven't seen anything formal about what they intend on doing there. I mean, we hear rumors of a roundabout, red light, maybe. That was, the traffic issue would be a concern on my, the project is going to majorly increase the traffic flow coming out of that site. I think it's speeding at thirty-five mile an hour, I believe. And utilities, they stock at Busy Bee, right? Our sewer, water sewer?
Busy Bee is serviced by water, sewer, and gas from City Lido. I believe that, I don't, I don't know if it stops at the site or goes to the northern boundary of the site, but it's, it's at least in Busy Bee.
And then, I guess I have a question from Mr. Pavat. Would this be considered spot zoning? In my real estate years at Florida State, I think we've talked about that, learned about that, but I know you're not a Florida State fan, so you may knock on that education.
Anything they torture doesn't count.
At any rate, this parcel is isolated by itself in agricultural. It is inside the land use area, I understand that.
And that's what makes it appropriate, because it is the, the employment center that we have, the employment center was specifically designed to be, to handle all different types of zoning that would be going in there. There's a number of different categories, you know, that could go there, including all the way down to agriculture. So that's why it doesn't, even though it's separated, as you see on the map, it hasn't happened. Spot zoning doesn't have an application. By the way, while you're, you were talking about, you were asking Mr. Meeks about, you know, the application amount, traffic, and those types of things, those are typically things that are not involved in the initial zoning decision, but when they do come in with a site specific plan, then the traffic consideration, what they may have to do or not do to be able to utilize the site and access, D O T access or our access would then be considered, you know, at that time. But just to let you know that there is, on this southern end of this particular piece of property, the county owns that piece going across there. This property, we've already granted the easement to come across, our, our piece of property.
Okay. I guess that was, that was, those are my concerns. I mean, I personally think we're jumping the gun a little bit, going quarter mile out when we have other vacant tracks there and, and there's a huge traffic concern there. I know I've lost a personal friend there, he lost his life there and, and there's big issues there, so I just.
And we're well aware of that. I think Mr. Harris could address those concerns a little bit more about, you know, what has been happening out there and it is, it is way up there on our radar.
I can speak to the traffic issue. We've been, we've had extensive conversations with D O T, repeated conversations, will continue to do so, but the area that's most congested, that's been most problematic is quite a bit south of this piece of property, right up next to Busy Bee and the interstate. This is farther out where we're going to be building a fire station. We know that we've got to do an improvement to get onto that roadway. And in this particular case, this property has been built to share the same driveway that we're going to be building to our own property. So it's been my, my far removed congested area that we have a little problem since today.
And Mr. just added that, something just came to mind, some of the discussions that myself and Mr. Harris has had with D O T, Commissioner Land up at the I ten interchange, that is something I've been working on very hard. I do have some drawings of that, I can show you. I'd like to revisit that, before you two just got back to their actual meeting face-to-face, I'm going to go back and prove that's still their plan, but I didn't want to add to show that to you, some of the discussions we've had. But back to what Mr. Pavat said, and I heard y'all talk when I asked you the question, when the site development plan comes to our desk, I think we've had that same discussion across the road as, as to some of the requirements we would have as to getting traffic on and off that highway. So, and that's something when that time done, we do all the dressing, for sure.
Yeah, I just didn't know we were tying our hands and opening ourselves up to liability by approving the zoning, that there was already a project intended here and, and can't finalize D O T access.
You can't do conditional zoning anyway. That isn't even allowed. So anything that you do.
Yeah, I know you can't do conditional.
With the, with the development, a site plan when it is approved or proposed is when you have an opportunity to participate in that conversation. In fact, let me just, the rest of the store and transportation, we're actually encouraging transportation to go all the way up to where this, where we're going to be coming out. The property's on the west side of the road there.
Yes.
We've had conversations recently about that property owner, also identifying the same locations of the properties on the west side and on the east side, all come together at this very point, which is farther north than, like I said, the other activities that we're all familiar with down there in this, in Busy Bee.
Any other questions, Commissioner Land? I was trying to, thank you, Commissioner Meeks. At this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Is there any wish to speak on this matter? See, and then I'll close public comment. And do we have any other questions or comments on the board? At this time, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Flynn?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four one. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Thank you. At this time, we'll take care of items four through eleven on our consent agenda. Commissioner White has confused this stuff in the document.
And four, and I'd like also pull ten, ask for perspective.
The first one that you was pulling is because you want to explain that?
I have a.
Just for the record.
I own thirty percent of that business on the store, which has a paid invoice of seventy-four, seventy-four dollars and fifty thousand, if I'm reading that right. And I'm recusing myself from these paid invoices on, when you're item number four.
Yes, sir. Clearly noted. All right, you have questions or concerns on item number ten?
Item number ten is the road graders.
Yes.
And I was flipping through that on the financing part of that. I noticed that six of the road graders are, have an interest rate of four and a quarter percent, two of them have a three and a half percent, which was great. I was just wanting some clarification on that.
Mr. Harris, would you excuse that?
Shannon?
Yeah.
Can you even respond to that without talking to them, about why they offer those different rates?
I, I don't have any statement from them on the difference, on what it is. They essentially, when they gave us the quote for the previous, the six motor graders, that was at the previous year's price. And that could account for that difference, I don't know, because I did not raise that point with them. So they essentially offered us a cheaper price for the six graders. And without discussing it with them and putting a question to them, I would, I don't, I don't have a good answer for that.
Just my concern that if, if we can get two or three and a half, I think we can walk three and a half.
We may be able to. We could back talk to them about it.
Is it going, will it be a problem if we bring this back on the next?
It is a problem, it is.
Just as long as, I mean, we're on the topic around this issue. We'll just pull item number ten for this time and we'll bring it back at our next regular board meeting.
Thank you, that's all I got.
Yes, sir. Okay, at this time, we will, do I have a motion for items four through nine and eleven?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since number four was pulled.
Okay.
Would you do four separately from the rest?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavat. Do I have a motion to approve item number four?
So would.
Got a motion by Commissioner Land?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, items five through nine and item number eleven, do I have a motion to approve?
So would.
Got a motion by Commissioner White?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four. Thank you, gentlemen. We have one additional agenda item, number two, I'm sorry. Item number fifteen, number one on that. Declare two thousand A Chevrolet surplus and return to the sheriff's office. And also, item number two, authorization to purchase additional protective equipment and supplies to support core operations for the lens one county. Do I have any questions on this or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Flynn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we got all the way to the end, everyone back up. All the way to the start. I apologize for jumping around tonight and just trying to kind of fit everyone's schedule. Oh, also, before we get to item one, we'll do number three, approval of minutes from November second, twenty twenty, regular board meeting. Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
So would.
Got a motion by Commissioner Land?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Flynn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, item number one for tonight, hold election of chairman for twenty twenty-one. Do you chairman begin to decide given meetings on December first or sooner in case of emergency? Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Flynn?
Motion, you remain with that too.
My second.
Second.
Two seconds. Especially. So I got a, I got a motion by Commissioner Flynn and Commissioner Hale, I'm going to let Commissioner Land do this one. I got a second by Commissioner Land. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the confidence. I have to say thank you, sometimes it's not. At this time, we'll hold election of the vice chairman for twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Board of Directors.
Thank you, Commissioner White is, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but I'm just, got a motion for Commissioner, or by Commissioner White?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Yes, sir. So for the next twelve months, it's going to be the same old same old. Thank y'all, seriously, thank you. At this time, we will, Mr. Pavat, you have any?
No, I'm just, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Harris, you got any closing comments?
Yes, sir.
At this time, we'll have closing comments from Commissioner White.
Just like to thank the citizens of Swan County for letting me put their faith in me and doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Land?
Making new guys go first, huh?
Absolutely.
No, I'm just honored to be here. Like Franklin said, I'm humbled that the folks of District Three had their faith in me to, to stand up for them and, and look out for Swan County, not just District Three, but, you know, all of Swan County. So I'm humbled, I'm honored, and hopefully I won't let them down.
Absolutely. Kind of skipped over for a second. I have an email from the public wishing to speak, any closing comments this evening. Y'all, please feel free to come up.
I apologize, I didn't fill out hard.
It's, it's my fault, I've been all over the place tonight.
No, I messed up.
Just a name and address for the record.
John Little, and I live at ninety-four sixty-five, one hundred and twenty-nine Drive.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, commissioners, and Mr. Harris. I am the director of communications for Swan Valley Electric Cooperative, and I hope I'm doing my job right. Hope most people here tonight know that we provide electricity to the rural parts of Swan County. And what a lot of people might not know is some of the other ways we impact the economy. And between our employees and contractors that we have, we support one hundred and fifteen full-time jobs. Our national association did a study last year and they estimate that, you know, trickle down through our con-
Our National Association did a study last year, and they estimate that, you know, trickle down through our other contractors, suppliers, local businesses. We support a total of two hundred and eighty-five local jobs, about seventy million dollars' worth of labor income. We also pay property taxes. Every pole you see, we've got about eighty thousand of them in our four county area. We've got a lot of wires, we've got a lot of transformers and other equipment. We pay property tax on that. So that's why I'm here tonight, to present a check to the county for eight hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven and twenty-nine cents.
Had it, I almost missed this.
And, yeah, I would request that eight hundred thousand of it go to the Economic Development
Yes.
Department. Is that what you had online?
I don't think he's going to get that though.
But that's up to y'all. So if I can give this to you, Mr. Chairman, I
You don't need to sit so close to fight about that.
Appreciate all y'all doing for the county, and we're honored to serve.
I just, I had to pull this thing out of envelope, look at it. I've never seen a check that big, I don't believe. But
It's eight hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents right there. So we're grateful.
Thank you very much. Leaving ahead on our closing comments, sorry about this.
Commissioner Fleming?
I just have a few long comments. I'd like to welcome Commissioner White and Commissioner Land to go to county commission. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
And you look forward to good things. And I did go to swear, and Commissioner White, and his wife, and they called it, the judge actually put the razor right hand. He started on the left hand.
Too political.
This is, this is what I say. I was, I was back, sitting in the back behind Commissioner, our chairman. I get mixed up on these things, but
Speaker to David.
As you get older, it happens to you.
I write, I write every commissioner's name down, I sit right here, because I get confused.
Right. Okay, but anyway, I was looking at every interview that got thrown in. And one gentleman, he kept rocking, he was going back, he was going forward. And I see, and I said, that was me. I'm American. And then, then Stage Frank, when he came to the board, come to the meeting, staring at everybody, and he was talking about staring at you. But that's just the name of the game. This, this is what we do. This is how we take it. I look at poster, and when you go to these back meetings, that tell you that, you know, can't teach it. Grow, and it's the beginning. And it's a learning process. This is what you learn. But I'd just like to congratulate y'all guys tonight, and Commissioner Hale, he got swanered again. Been in that situation before. So, and to Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, for accepting another chairman as the chair, you did a great job.
Appreciate it.
Did a great job. Glad to be a part of this machine.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. Mr. Harrison?
I'll just say, Commissioner Fleming said we were at a ceremony this afternoon, and I want to thank the people of Swan County, especially District One, for having faith in me for another forty years. That means a lot. I promise not to let you down. Worked twice as hard as I did the first four years. But it's an honor to have these two guys with us here. I look forward to working with you. It's encouraging to see you guys both engaged this evening, asking questions, and having these discussions. And that's what we're here for, to look out for the people, and have those discussions, and then they come together and do what's right for Swan County. I just, I want to say thank you, and looking forward to it. Can I ask that?
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Just got a couple of quick things. Number one, I'd like to welcome this land. She's here with River Bend News. She's going to start make, show a big light on the Florida County Commissioners.
I feel like I'm home. I did this thirty years before. And we're starting up thirty.
We'd like to welcome her. So she'll be documenting our meetings and putting it out there for the world to see, and we're grateful.
And start buying her lunch.
Other than that, I'd just like to welcome both you gentlemen. It's a, it's a very rewarding job as you get into it. Right now, personally, I, just like Mr. Fleming was saying, we're overwhelmed with things, and trying to learn, and trying to understand, and get a hold of things. We don't want to make a mistake, and it, it takes time, but I have no doubt that both of you will do, do great at it. I mean, it's just your demeanor. And you'll get comfortable and and you'll enjoy and be rewarded for, when you go home, it'll be rewarding to you for, you know, helping the people. And it doesn't matter if you're helping someone that's got a bag of garbage on the side of the road, and they need to figure out how to get it cleaned up, and how to get the sheriff out there to help us take care of things like that. I mean, just the smallest thing is, is so meaningful to some people, because they've come for help for other things before, and maybe didn't get the help that they needed. And when you're able to do something, they, they never forget the little things. It's just, it's one of those things, the people, that you'll see the most, the little things will go the furthest. And I'm, I'm grateful for both of you, and look forward to working with you. There's no doubt in my mind, I know both of you, I know probably Travis a little longer, but I'm, I'm Mr. White, I mean, we're going, we're going to have some discussions and debates, but that's what we're here for. That's what we're here for. We're here to, at the end of the day, we're going to come together and do what's right for the people of Swan County. But there's a reason there's five of us here, and that's for everybody to have an opinion, and us to get to the bottom of it, and make the best decision for this county. So I thank y'all for that. At this time, all I need is a motion to adjourn?
Any motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.